Um, kept the uh, the pedestrian bridge and part of the trail in there, and that's what this item is for. The pedestrian bridge is approximately 270,000 C participation, just 15% through the development agreement. And then around 60,000 for the uh, the paved trail, which are tied to Hartland Drive, and then extend several hundred feet west of the pedestrian bridge. Um, there is, yeah, on the second page, there is some money available for Hartland participation. It was around $300,000. Um, I believe that money was initially, at least a good portion of that money was initially, um, set aside for the sewer participation with the sewer extension at Hartland Heights. So money's there. I don't know if council would want to use all or some of that to help pay for the pedestrian bridge or trail or keep it for the sewer.
I was thinking the amount for the sewer was 166.
That was, that was the original amount. And then I know we've thrown some in there because that price has gone up and I, so I don't know exactly where that all came from.
Okay.
But I know the original amount was, yeah, 166 or so.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, how you want to move that money around or not move it around or split it up is, is an option. I just wanted to mention that to the council.
Now, the 166, six, I know was borrowed for sure, but I'm thinking probably the other, the coming up to the 300 was. So if you wanted to move it for pedestrian bridge or trail participation, we'd have to check the bond purpose, make sure that we.
Yeah, I don't know if some of that extra money Cynthia was just pulled in from other projects when we had extra money or.
Yes, I believe so, yeah.
Um, and again, that's, I, I know Shane and Bruce would like to get that done. Um, but obviously, at this point, it's kind of a bridge to nowhere. So it's council's decision if you want to do that now or not. I don't really care, but it's on the list for your consideration. Um, maintenance and paving of elevated water storage tanks. So as early in the meeting, we're putting together the specs for that. Check, um, for this year, if we start moving forward with that, that should be adequate with preliminary design and coordination and things like that. So we wouldn't need to borrow any money to afford that project at this time, but next year we'd like to do those, so. Um, the new water supply well, come back to that, the treatment. Um, the Hartland Heights Neighborhood Park, again, the money's there. John talked about that, said bid numbers came in pretty good. Um,
Is there a reason we don't have a number something?
Because the money's already been approved for it.
Right, right. I was, I, I don't know, but council, but I would like to see it. It's kind of detract and go with that on here. But if you don't want to do that.
And that's fine, you can. I just didn't want to confuse money that's still needed, money that's not. So if you want to see it, it's fine.
The accountant need a nice little information. And if you don't want to put them in the, totalers or tracking that out of the totalers, that's fine. We just know the grade will turn anything.
Just so I understand, for example, on the neighborhood park, that's the one we just approved for 190,000 people.
I think the budget was 301.5.
305, 304.
304.8.
And then there's the playground equipment that the council already approved was 50 some thousand, wasn't it, Joe?
Forty, 52, 52 some thousand.
And how much of that promised grant is very used on all of it through ISG?
The grant, we haven't received a dime of the grant yet. They, they're waiting for it.
Full completion.
So the.
It's another one of those, it ran on, have to, from its off-planting by us and then it's paid. Great version of this.
After.
Beverly Road overlay, that's the Mid County project. Um, Fairfax Road, Left Gear Road, street lighting. Um, that's uh, money that's been previously approved bonded to extend some streetlights to the left view road down to Traverell. We had a little bit more in last meeting, but council requested take that out to extend the lights all the way down to 76. So, so the dollars that would be needed in that would be zero. Um, the 22821 main extension project, it preyed pre-crossing in one project. The uh, and then the UP would be a follow-up likely next year. To get that all coordinated and done with the UP. So there is 429,000, there were 780,000 dollars previously approved for all projects in one project. John estimated roughly 429,000 for the 383 crossing and around 351,000 for the Union Pacific Crossing and then uh, basically a lot of that extra money needed 21,000 for the break pre-crossing and 24,000 for the, um, Union Pacific, a lot of that's in Union Pacific additional fees and costs. Um, and then anticipated extra bid and things like that. Um, so the extra money for those two projects totaled about 45,000. And then Mandeville Street, similar type thing, extra cost with UP, the Union Pacific coordination and, and add hand maintenance, inspection fees, things like that. Um, additional cost around 26,000. So as shown, that's about 2.5 million dollars for the project cost for, the upcoming FY20. So the uh, the next page. I mean, I'd find I can run through all of this unless you have questions, but like I said, I moved the Hartland Heights sewer participation back here. Um, moved a couple of other items back here that were on the one year from last, last meeting. Um, so, if you have any question in that page, let me know. But just going back then to the, water or the well and the water supply treatment. So the, the new well, we have about, we have anticipated about 1.32 million dollars for the entire project cost, including preliminary planning, design, um, observation well, things like that. We have 852,000 dollars um, through the ARPA grant. So that's a difference of 468,000 dollars that we need to fund for the well. Water supply, there's planning and engineering in that. Um, for the next fiscal year, and that's around 325,000 dollars that would be needed for FY20 pillar. Now, and I, I'll let Kevin and Nor, Brian touch base on this. So with uh, our last meeting with I, ISG uh, last week, there was a conversation about needing a second well out there as soon as possible. And so the thought is we'd be to add a second well on the prevalent after site at the time that we do the water treatment plant, the design and construction for that. So that'd be two to three years out. So when that's up and running, we'd have two wells. So on five, the two to five year plan, there are some budget numbers thrown in there for the addition of a second well.
So you're estimating two wells in the treatment center. You're currently projecting about seven. It was second well.
The second well, yeah. And, and that number until we get the first ball drill, get water quality and things like that. We won't be able to give you a, the.
Can you, that, does that qualify for you for SRF? I'm sure, but. And our current SRF, we're done paying that off in 25, that's correct. I agree with you, say that.
That's the sewer ones.
That's just the sewer ones.
Brand new SRV water, which is the storage.
So on part of this, I looked at some graphs on that. I've got two copies if you want to see it. What we um, we're trying to do is um, what we're trying to do is give everybody a visual on where we are on our water needs. And um, so Brian was going to do some of the explanation on this, but visually you can see it coming up in the next few years. Um, with the wells and the current production, we're going to be underneath our demand, projected demand. So I'll let Brian kind of chime in on this, so I was going to let you.
Do you want the two minutes explanations?
Yeah, because this is a budget.
Yeah, well, that is.
Oh, no.
I know, but, but.
Yeah.
Don't know what all is involved, the, the extra money is nice and low ahead. So basically what the DNR is going to say, or what's going to be required, when we put in the well, we are going to be required to meet our demand with our highest producing model, not on line. So to do that, we have to have two wells. The second on was, we, the pumping requirements have to be calculated at 12 hours per day pumping to get to that demand, by the way. So we can't just pump more to get to that demand for the total for the day. Because what's going to happen is the aquifer is going to get down and the DNR is going to come in and say, you got to do something to get you to continue doing that. So when they're planning that it was a requirement, what they mentioned out of the meeting is you got to go up your 12 hour advance. And you got to figure for one, while being out of service. So this still meets your demand.
The reason for the 12 hours is the wells need time to recover. Um, to bring the water back in. And I actually had another graph that actually showed that our aquifer, the slurring that we're getting the water from currently, has dropped down about four feet from the last two years and it has not recovered. So as the more water we keep growing out of the slurring aquifer, over time, that's going to go down. So it's not critical, but it is something in the future that if we need more water, we're going to have to go deeper to the Jordan aquifer and stay out of the slurring. Otherwise, we're just going to be depleting our water supply out of that. And we're at the tail end of the slurring. The slurring is shallow, it's just outside of Fairfax. It, there's a shelf and it drops and goes really deep. So we're in the last spot in the state to get the best potential uh, energy cost for getting the water out of the ground. And um, the slurring is real shallow, deep, the farther it goes, the bottom stays the same, the top just drops off. So it becomes like 50 feet deep instead of about 250 feet deep. So that was part of this. It's nothing, it's, in the next 10 years, somebody's going to have to be thinking where we're going to get our water from. Because it won't be out of the sinkhole. So.
We can do a better presentation if you want, just ask for it all for this thing, but the short version is they're requesting or they're probably thinking we have to do well now. And we should think about doing well while we're doing treatment building at the same time, right, to meet the needs that we're going to have at that point. It will be five years down the road and the demand will be higher.
The other aquifer you mentioned, where is that located?
Way, way, way deep.
The Jordan is probably about 1,800 feet deep. But it is a regulated aquifer to state dictates how much water can be pulled out of that. They're starting to lighten the restrictions on that because the conservation efforts you can have working. Plus they can get you some more recharge up north. Um, you know, the aquifer, we're not doing one's pulling from the slurries. Marion and everybody upstream from us pulling from it. So they're also helping cause the drop down type of overhead. So it ain't all us. It's everybody's as well, plus lack of bringing recharge. There's numerous environmental reasons why it didn't get recharged. But um, it is something to watch and I do track it pretty close over the years. So just trying to keep it informed that someday down the road, might be asking to go somewhere else for water.
And Shane, this process that you have on the second sheet, that has the treatment and the second well, but not holding the Jordan.
That's no.
Yeah.
And the well filled as well after we're helping the slurr, slurr.
Right.
So they married and touched on it last time and the second well really was never brought up until the last meeting and it's all because of what the DNR is now.
That's what we were told, that they will require it when you start calling out applications for medicine and whatnot, when you start getting calculation checks. That's what they're going to launch probably the results.
Because initially it was talked about apply for two wells because it takes so long to get a well approved.
Right. And we can still, we can apply for three or four. It's just a matter of how many to be approved and approved. The application part doesn't really affect anything. It's just how much money you want to grow. So if we think we're going to do two, we'll probably just go through and apply for three. And if we don't use this other application that we don't use within the time period, we just reapply when we do. But you need to apply upfront first for more than enough so that you don't have to go back and do it again because it's a setback of several months, if not a year to get it done. So that's, this logistics on our end. It was kind of important to throw it out there that I wish that I would have known that we were going to need two wells. We weren't planning for that. So that's what I really wanted to mention, kind of a possibility.
It's just hard for me to wrap my head around it, talking about one well. For the last six to nine months and then now what changed in going to just need a second.
Oh, the graph, hopefully the graph actually showed you a visual where this beach has been built. So.
We can give you a better description on the next meeting if you want, but it was just sort of kind of knowing that was a real possibility.
Well, and even since the beginning, Kevin and I were talking about the well, we had talked about a second well. And, and a lot of it's dictated on both mine and two of the, those are the one. But if we got any more, more design process, then it's like, well, we're thinking it could be three, five, six years. Get them there as soon as you can. If it's about given so it's available for 300. So obviously the first well, we did it well this year, we got it, we applied for this year, we got some other money. But even at that point, can't be added, the system will be a treatment.
So is this 1,320 for the first well that had the test well taken out? Did he specify?
Yes, it's got an observation well, but it, and that was part of that number that was presented two days ago. Um, so that number was taken out. There was an observation well and the test was the test well, which is that was actually one of them.
Yeah, because Cynthia, if I can write the, Kevin, the right trips and wrong, you just said not to drill.
Yeah.
Observation.
Uh, the observation.
But you said just drill the, the.
My suggestion goes to not do the test well, but to do the production one.
That's what I meant.
And the, the observation.
Well, we kind of put that, we were taking the risks at the beginning.
Yeah.
So we just want to be the ones that.
It's, it's not.
And it matters.
Grill the observation well first to make sure they're going to hit water.
Yep.
Yeah.
And that's a whole lot cheaper. If they don't hit water, then stop right there. So.
That was like 60,000 or something like that.
Yeah, so somewhere in there, it was smaller.
And when we get done with the observation well, they'll cap it and fill it in. And you'll be abandoned. So.
Initially, they wanted to do the 10 inch one.
Well, they wanted to do the 10 inch one. They wanted to do a full bowl pump test to 500 gallons and pin it on to verify that was going to do exactly what we were asking it to do. That was the only reason for doing that.
And it's a good way to do that, but that's a huge cost, you know. So when you get out of that, you end up checking that one, you leave it time to grow. So two more inches and it's drilled. Saves you hopefully longer. With its risk. Sorry. Do, yeah. Those little things you got to think about. It's a two year down the road and you don't want to be killed, you know.
I think that's part of the reason why I mentioned, you know, in the CFT instance, because we have a lot of decisions to make in where those bonds or funds are coming from. Sure. And uh, it is much as I hate axing things, I think there's definitely some hard choices that have to be made. Especially, I don't know, the numbers off the top of my head, but I mean, from 2008 to 2020, I think the population of Fairfax tripled. So you have to think of um, what kind of holy pad on the water supply. And it's not like Marion and other communities have driven too. So those are all things that.
And just for a note, I do plan on trying to do more conservation and resupply bad this summer. When, nobody's really going to notice it, but we can save considerable amount of water.
When you think of the age of your, your wells you have now, well, they have lasted forever. Just like, you know, it's been called the last river.
Yeah, just going through the numbers on this first page, you know, if you was one, one different than that, two, five, one, four. Um, I would say that the 81,000 of those last four numbers, we'd be either come up with cost and loss or road use, I mean, the 10,000 would probably come out, road use. Um, the 21, the 24 would probably just come right out of the water by now. You know, I would think that we would not spot mine for those additional 81,000. Then on this front page, you have 793,000 that could possibly be SRF, the additional for the well. And when we're getting the treatment started, that makes a million six for, for the others. Just to be, subtotals possible.
Does that get tacked on to be SRF or is it?
It would be in, be asked by through the, you know, the whole process. And I'm not, mirating, we don't, I would, because I do things. And then we have to decide, okay, if we're doing 793,000, you jump in for a whole huge amount. You know, at once.
Or the, right? Where, where are we getting?
The tree, the left.
So that on our first page, you can look at the money remaining is the new water supply well, water supply treatment, the new well, and.
Then on the, the second page is.
And then.
Seven million.
Page two is the big shit, about third way down, the treatment system, water mains and connection to the existing water supply system and the second well being recommended. That's a nice word, right? So what Cynthia was asking is, do we do 700 now and then wait for the pain for one, a year or two from now, or do we do it all at once? And just kind of go back to what you started on drilling. This is SRF, so let's go against the debt, right? However, those payments going to be paid for SRF, we go ahead and.
Right. Well, and that means you have to look to rates, yeah, and make adjustments if it is.
I mean, if it's like ripping off a brandy, if you want to do a slower, just do it all at once.
The only thing I just, if you're going to do the full 7 million, we'd want to see more detailed numbers from ISG on that. And I don't know how quickly this gets at.
Well, that, I mean, I heard it's saying, so I don't, I guess that's a long time.
And firm, firm numbers on that.
Yeah, I think there's. It could be more, you know. It could be more simple. Just remove the, the talk side, but then it could be more.
Sure.
I was going to be surprised at all.
Well, then do we wait to do the well when that is ready or they can't get it or need to do it?
You can't.
And we said you drill the well and you can't connect it to the system.
They got to drill the well to get the water quality, otherwise you can't design one of them.
Then they have to run tests and then you know what kind of treatment. And then they can design it or anything. And then you know what you need to make that water safe. And the only way we should save any time is if they'll let us do a pilot off the other well. That's going to be relatively close to the same depth, which is relatively close to the same water quality. And except that pilot is going to try to. And if they do that, we might be able to save six months. But either way, best case is still in here. And it still may not be accurate after the girl. Right. And maybe self start over again and it's another six month deal.
So what you're saying is to go with the 793.
I said first.
Okay.
Three and seven nine, that's the two math.
The 468 and the 325.
On page one, the new water supply and water supply treatment, it shows dollars need or. How can that be dollars?
And Cynthia, the 325, I don't know if we could use one of those painted and designed homes, if that would be beneficial or not.
Well, there's zero. There is 0% interest.
If that's something we want to do, I think applications do need that.
For planning and.
Planning.
For the plant part. And then you turn it into a revenue.
Yeah, all yours, but information upon the whole, yeah, future projects. Wouldn't mind that, what you got in mind? Go ahead. Yeah. That's your concern, your well, the additional ones.
So what do you think about the 81,000? One, do you want, you know, you're already into three of those projects and Cynthia already committed to Mid County, we're going to, like, go. You want to try to get that money to settle?
My opinion is if we can pay it or we fix it by this then, don't look. We just look where we lost money at now.
Uh, well, the projected June 23 bounce, 139,000, I think. And we are estimating to take in 400. Uh, 450,000 dollars. Let's not say we don't have other projects, you know, from out of it. I would think that the 21 and the 24 come out of the water. Current balance. And the 10 could probably come out of the road, current balance of being just the 26 out of the loss. I don't know that for sure yet. Probably see what else.
I will, yeah, I think you'd have other.
And then the rest of the projects, which total 1,640, do you want to do? Or plant? You're not making the absolute, this point.
We were talking about the Hartland Heights, Cindy, participation. Um, and last month we were kind of met on the pedestrian grid. How much of that, if any, are we looking to do, or how much of the participation excluding the pedestrian grid, who will be in that 380, or do we know? That's the bridge and we're staying on one of those side.
Yeah, we needed a trail on the place consistently where curves, obviously comes west and where curves to the north, there's a trail tying there. And we run south west and west with pedestrian bridge. And then the estimate I can would extend the trail, you get across the pedestrian bridge and extend the trail. We go off the line along the overfalls, go over pond, we're going to stop short on the original creek that comes in through the ice, we stop short of that.
With any of that, because we're not going to extend this sand to your sewer, I need like a. Because we're not gonna extend this sand to your sewer, I need like it, it disturb, we think they're there.
Everything that you strip hospital, you strip with sanitary sewer, should have been the process.
And the thing to consider, memory serves as planning develop north, along Gady Street, county further west of Long Path. It has to be done eventually, the question is.
We have more important projects to work on.
Channel, even really clamoring for pedestrian bridge in Hartland Lake. Or is this primarily driven by wooden shape?
I think they do get in priority, so on the trail, I'll show them it. But.
And if you throw, they've done, they go, oh.
But you. Go far away to do that.
Yeah, where's it gonna end?
Isn't it, yeah, did you say it's a bridge to nowhere?
Yeah, the area that's not.
But this, they'll wait everything in the, they gotta put the bridge bumpers and everything in now, is that kind of way you jump in, wanna get the bridge in?
So they've got, part of this, the pond, all the structures still way built, and then we've got, go look, they basically have to have a section, I mean, checked out. Their plan is to do that as soon as possible, we tried to do a police more, it didn't work. So, they can get that done, it would be nice to have the bumpings and tie into it for the bridge, but we gotta drive piles and anything like that, and do that, and if you prefer that, bridge and then, just like we do in the complex, so.
I think it's one of those in theory, it's nice to do it all at once, makes it to an engineering perspective. But from a reality perspective and a financial perspective, question we had to ask is is it something we wanna look at? Or has it been a priority? And where do priorities came? Things to consider, how many times will kick man about down the road?
Yeah.
Did man about use a little bit more than the pedestrian?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is there any ties this into a timeframe on that agreement, development agreement for the participation of work?
I think it records three years through the trail, like that was probably due here to.
For the trail to be, and so you did it for.
I don't remember off the top of my head, but I think, originally there was a trail on both sides with the original, and they had issues get it to the alarm, the uncoordinated. I, I think it was, the trail was supposed to be put in for three years exactly, and we backed it over the time.
But they goes with the original plan.
What's that?
That went with the original one.
And then the reminder, because the original plan was that the city would put in the eastern portion. For, no, it was at the city and developer would pay fifty percent each on the eastern portion of the trail, and the city paid a hundred percent on the western portion, because it was a good trail. And then the eastern portion came out and the developers are involved, they grew, so the city put in the western portion, so that's how it's been like. Um, but I don't remember the exact years, there are some that just haven't installed in three years. Maybe we can, I know it passed out. Do you wanna know that year? If they still continue the pond, any of those, right?
That's why I have a question, that's a word that the devil, devil that.
Well, I know, more information on that, there's, like I said, there's a creek in the west side, comes in the bottom, it's in east west, basically it's been straight in by a pond and up there. And they're, they're gonna have to call, they didn't have trail cross that, do, she requested that the city page would have the participants in that, which is not the English, well, maybe. And it says that, that it was something else that, that we would come once. Kind of the trail extended more than that. Uh, whether or not council resets it, you know.
So Cynthia, pulling out that eighty one thousand, you say like one point six or something similar there?
Well, they'll pull out the eighty one to do with other funds, and then the seven ninety three is SRF, that leaves us no.
So we're a lot of thought of then bringing up a project opportunity, I mean, that seems past what isn't been bonded, not a fan of that, we stay out, but one little chat, we're on the road. Well, there's a lot of, there's a lot of money.
So, and I don't have, running the memory service and Cynthia correcting, we will pay off geo bonds about four point two million. Four point four.
Yeah, I think it's one point two this year, and one point four next.
So we still are actually, after paying off their recent, our geo obligation by two hundred thousand dollars, and that's anticipating additional seven million, now excluding a cemetery, maybe if we ever get a bill for the DOT for that. Any extras? Just, there's a lot of things coming in, so, because you're asking me, until there's a firmer commitment to building out westward along the pedestrian branch upon, on being completed. Now probably reversing, shall bring a lot of, so.
Um Cynthia, there was, there was that three hundred thousand on there.
Yeah, we got money with the IDOT.
No, we have it bought.
Yeah, we've already bought.
That's already bought, yeah.
I don't, you're talking.
But cemetery sewer for the pond.
There's three hundred thousand that's set aside for Hartland Heights participation, I, I did hear that being discussed, I don't know if that's one, if the council wants to consider that or not.
We could probably dig into that. Are we still doing all the plantings in, in the pond? Another thing, once every year, plowing, what's your flowers?
Top of the pond. There's a lot of plantings, I think they finished that up in small.
Yeah.
I know, we don't want to, everything?
Oh, we've paid.
We paid for it. Okay, we'll see what happens.
We take that and I'll.
So it's on the way, we can make it, so.
It's being pieced now, right?
And digging those old bonds, see we did bond by three hundred thousand, see tier mark, if it's uh, what the description of the bond is.
Right. Now we see we've left with the three eighty and tons already, or that perfect.
See if make up the difference, or see if you have any, any, what funds I can, like, raise a bond. Because I was thinking with the sanitary sewer, right? Participation.
Yes.
Or is we can like, move sanitary sewer, I just saw. So we're looking to cut the three eighties at that, here, find an alternative previous involving sources for that. We're using it from one, six, we changed to one, two and a half, somewhere around there.
And see if we can SRF the other.
Yeah, SRF is seven, uh, I think three.
Yeah.
Seven ninety three SRF out of the road, neverly, road participation, out of the water, the most extensions on very reaching Pacific. Now, lots of review, just a street improvements, across three people. Soon they are.
So your thought then, just got one two, a lock, or anything else, right? Something else, that's what I wanted to be loose, I love to be a cheer. Because at some point here, yeah, like, who said, there's a lot of big projects. I'm gonna get all that. Be nice to get them all done, but it doesn't necessarily help if what jumps out to you, that you want to move forward, finish your pipe. Well, if you're on the spot. Tony, you know, you're the one, I don't know, I was just asking a question.
We look at Vandalville, that's gonna happen. All of the pretty downtown, spent money on that. Engineering, obviously, more with the city. Residents. Then you look at all these other projects, you, that fall out. Because I would spend money on software, wait till the end of it. Five, ten years down the road, after. I mean, to buy those one, two, three, four. A lot of things would be, it's in that, but there's three projects right there, over two million. When your bonds, bonding hold, pass your, right?
Yeah, that's always an option too.
Kevin Halt Dyer is the sanitary sewer repairer, why?
I mean, I've had any issues recently, but they are damaged in videos, we show significant damage and infiltration. It's I'd say if, at least if you do something in the next five years, I wouldn't keep postponing that. It could eventually come back to create bigger issues, but currently we haven't had any problems with it. It's been holding, but all of all those involved videos, they did evaluate it, and my evaluation, there's they come out about the same what the needs were. So, I'd say within five years, you need to absolutely address it.
Big part of that was probably me to start back years ago, we did a lot of replacement down the old part town, different phases. Much like, thought the next step would be to do the same thing, unless, or just the phases, how big a phase, that's up to you.
Sure.
If we're having a lot of collapses and sore plugs, then I'd say it'd be move it off the list, but we're not seeing that.
So, history, it's only, the biggest problem we've had is the way tree roots and that sort of, yeah. It's been a few years, roughly been five, six years, so.
We've been very fortunate.
Yeah, it seems like we're really good for that, but.
And that was a total of problems, so.
When did you guys get a video?
It's.
Four years ago.
Yeah.
Because the other thing is, as long as you put it off, we're not for that video.
Yeah, you, you need, which we've talked about, keeping that video, going with his portions here and there. For years, we sold them.
That service connection is really another issue, we need.
How much extra was it to add weight down to the other Traveros properties? We, we mixed, we didn't talk about two hundred quarters, you know? It was like eight thousand or?
I think it was, it's actually eight thousand, eight thousand, seven, six.
Because right now they're doing the property just to the east.
The intersection, I think it was on, from the intersection, then.
No, I ain't construction now that rumor was there, but probably over there.
Yeah, behind, oh, yeah, we used the building, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's the building behind it.
Right, same work, they haven't done the one to the south yet, no.
That's doesn't matter.
I didn't know they're doing that until I, we had a shortage of hand workers, figured out where they're hanging, type of putting ride.
And it doesn't have to be tonight, but if my master me correctly, I think really what Charles person needs to do is think on the two, five year plan. What needs to be either asked or pushed back, because you put in the dollars you need before and even if you subtract, like, back to a one, two, three years, it's easy, times that by five. You take six million off that. You're still at seventeen million. Dollars needed, which exceeds the entirety of our geo bid.
We're a big ticket item, so it's gonna be, it's gonna be.
Yeah, you just talked, one third of it will be SRF for the water treatment.
I've seen some budget light in your, CFP stuff, streets.
You know.
Standing in opposition for maintenance and repair was, was that? One hundred three hundred, where you're hundred thousand for a street in Torrey, doing this, that is the plan for future.
That's just basically come out of the plan, and you know, do all this, the streets and the conditions and typically your, your streets and city doesn't do it, but you pay the street or when your street light and with your, your craft scene, if you don't play, you can't just send it like work for tax, you know, that, but you kind of wake up, turns your role and place. Yeah. So, um that's something to do, and then you can come up with plans, use certain streets, it makes sense to do one layer, complete the instructions or maybe, you know, see, if there are day sixes and like, we also find our type, which streets are the only streets that we're trying to make sure. But now, year by year, the lower line, doing the ocean.
Since then, we're here, taking those ten, eleven years ago, we talked about committing together, council people, looking at that, trying to get a plan. We have that launch.
So we'll set up the items here, bridge replacement and treatment, treatment, well, really.
I would just like to point out the bottom one. You know, with things popping in the line of when Traveros, that area.
Lift station.
Yeah, at least to start the basic planning, that eighty thousand.
Also put a force main to the east of where they're at.
Isn't that, isn't that a plan?
Is it too low down there?
Right, they, we stepped out of the line off of Fairfax Road, hard way that direction, panel. And then we were gonna go further east with force main, and um we had that meeting with uh, big seater people, and they indicated there are people that are looking for spots to build in that area. Whether we're gonna be able to serve some or not is questionable. But, if any other businesses go east of Traveros into a smaller section, we're gonna need the lift station. Otherwise, they're gonna do what Traveros, what convergence has done. Um, is a little force main, bragger pop, send it all the way around, more pressure back down the Fairfax Road. And I don't think we want them all replaced out there.
What kind of costs are you looking at to put it, you said, you need to plan it?
It's on those there.
It's right above the uh, water treatment system.
But at least it get the planning started to that seems smart.
Is that you build the building faster when we get the lift station one?
Hard to figure, that there's a lot of industrial area that pop in. And you're there.
Right.
That, bro, that that's a good one. Eagle be the first one at the top, arm the tab on the clock with federal funds, three years or five years also to that.
Yeah, that's the second state with top one, finally, again.
Did you ever get clarification on the MPO, I mean? When that talk starts, or what do we do?
We have some questions.
The cemetery trail.
It's three years, you have to start spending. And then, as far as the gallery's on the back, there's not, it's kind of a gray area on house, assuming that, once you start spending, how many years you have to, to complete it, and um she basically sets up in there, just kind of get it spent. She said she's seen like it'll be a little five years, we start spending them.
When, when we were worth that?
Don't get pushy if uh, it goes beyond.
It was recently became available, didn't it?
October, yeah.
I just.
And with that, we, we don't have a DOT agreement, so the first step is getting the DOT agreement on that. And if you guys ultimately decide to kill that project we need to know before we enter that DOT agreement, because it's a lot harder to kill it, or it's gonna hurt future funding applications.
Right.
So.
Proof of that, and it's like, put it in and just have a sit there in the city loans for ten years, you know?
Yeah.
Well, what do you do?
Like, I like your cause, like. The two to five year CIP. Next meeting, we'll have to come in, you know, it's almost like you're. You got a plan for the next five years, you gotta kind of. A kind of stick to it, I mean, really, very much.
Stuff does a lot.
And I think it's good to, to take a cynical approach, but there's always possibility for MPO on United Roads. Or grants on city parks or something, but you're not gonna buy grant that's gonna pay us. Now, two and a half million for the park just page. But you, you can probably hopefully, you know, find additional sources of revenue to help offset some of those bond costs, but.
To my point with the MPO, where it go, left lapse, that looks better for us for our future applications, you know.
Yeah.
Uh, I agree with.
Point is just from a practical question, you know. I could work with the numbers after this and work in the one, two, six. On the first page, and then the eight, one, and the seven ninety-three, that's the anticipated SRF in other funds. And then you can give input on. The second page, but if you didn't want to put it in budget yet, if you're not certain as of February fourteenth. You know, you can adopt the budget. At the lower level and amend it until July, you know, if you decide, okay, you know, we've got more info, we'll take longer time to discuss it. We're gonna add another five hundred thousand to this current bond, you know, projection. We're not gonna have the bond in place, you know, these projects later by June thirtieth, or you can always do a budget amendment to. Yes, we like to try to do as much work now as you can, but you know, for these. Later projects, you're not as tied into that, you think the budget, you know. Realistically, the only thing you have with this, you can amend every element.
Does anybody see anything? Nintendo's asked question earlier that you want to bring forward? For example, and only because maybe saying we have MPO funding for the east great rail system. Or. Planning for the lift station, if we think there is a, a high probability, similar. Commercial or industrial, whatever you want to call it, development.
Well, if you bring the trail extension project or, you know, it says we need four hundred eighteen thousand. Oh, we have to cash, so you're really tied down.
True, so take our MPO from one to which, two more. But then eight hundred fifty-seven thousand of that, if you date back, you know, on its location. So it's one of those, you're actually bonding for a lot. But understand, the age or something, wrong. It's, you can date off once the project. Then keep which ones, MPO or permanent.
Must be serious.
Money from. So that's just one example.
And part of two and a half million church three, and that's going into sewer before the water plant goes on all the celloms.
And then we need to keep church.
But you can't do church, you need Vander.
Yeah, that's what.
Vanderbilt, alright, but the sewer part. It's to be done, the street or anyway, just the water plant, so whether you do a street or not.
Is that even out here?
Nope.
Yes.
Yeah, it's second.
Yeah.
Second, right below the artist number.
Yeah.
So that's another thing, and it all kind of like stacks, and sometimes it's hard to kind of follow the trail, because like, okay, we. We're behind, three years behind already doing that, so we won't, now, you know, our son just needs a. Now we need to treat the same for it. We also have to connect it to the city, in order to do that, we need to have the same series, so we want to have. Up and running, and to do that, we're gonna tear out Church Street. And then we also have to rebuild Church Street, Vanderbilt. And so on. That's something to kind of line up, okay, what, what do you want to do?
With your church street and the bridge next to that, it's probably a little, you know.
Yep. Like clucking cans and deciding.
Okay. Yeah, we basically, like, thank you.
But it's not the big ticket, it was just something that needs to be done, we just have to break the.
Yeah, I think that's a good approach, but.
Need to be a little more forward, or you have a smaller amount this year, and then you really, uh, you're hurt. You get into really shots, you get systems next. As we really have plan, try to plan and kind of lay it out. They're already sticking it, or just small one, but. And that's part of why we don't go to, have a twenty percent reserve, is if we, as you were saying, stick to a plan, and we do have something unexpected. You know, like my point in the nation of Walford. Then we have that. Reserve, for those who are lining, who are painting there. Bringing up shitty memories.
And the lieutenant.
Okay, moving on.
Okay, so.
So I took a few documents about donations, um, this thing I was really pushing for these to be not done with nonprofits. Unless they really provide a, a service that the city does their pants, and they would like to see an agreement about it. Um, so I think. You know, I'm sure you still want to donate to USA Days, but I think going forward when we do it, is we just draft a simple. Agreement talks about the economic development or economic boost of USA Days and supporting that. You know, for a right, but, um, that was one of the first questions you mentioned. Initial entrance, um, questions was about nonprofits, so. And, and clerks, all of the state have been hearing to give support in their, their audits. Southern, you have any, it's not really new info, but they're really pushing the force. Okay, now. Um, I'll try to keep the screen up, but does everybody have a paper copy in front of you? Everybody in the room, I mean, I may not try to set the screen up to date, I mean, if we need to, but. You know, everybody's got a copy.
I just sort of made you one.
Yeah, okay, so we're gonna start with revenues, tell me how much is forward to. I have a lot of it already filled in, but we can, this is just. Can't guess what's in the tax. Um, so the, uh, top taxes there are, um, the top line is at the gate ten, and again, we're already discussed that. Twenty-three thousand, three hundred and sixteen plus. Current here. But we're getting more into. Um, the ag land, that's at the three point oh oh three seven five, which is always is. Utility tax, that just, the state. Takes what we ask for property taxes and then separates part of that property tax, part of utility tax tax, why I don't. Um, licenses and permits, um, you can see them listed there, uh. It looks like we're almost exactly the same in my estimate, again, you can under or overestimate revenues in the state does not get it. Uh, again, use of money, um, some of it came from Joe, one lines from the library board, and again, you can see we're really close in. In, um, what are current budgets now, we're a little high for the actual, but they don't come in. Um, exactly even. Um, intergovernmental, um, I'm hoping that we get the rest of our the ratio, and we have everything submitted. Again, they're just going on turtles. Yeah, we have, you know, I've talked to them multiple, state multiple times. Yeah.
Plenty for doing.
Uh, so I don't anticipate, I don't know of any other federal program that we can run in front of, if anyone knows, sorry, hell. Um, state government, that's that commercial industrial state replacement that they're phasing out, because we have road, we're basing this out in five years and. This will be year number three, I think, so this number came straight from the ground from the state. Uh. Literally license, um, and, uh, fuel tax refund money comes from the state. Local, um, the city of Walford, um, that's the amount that, um, they already gave to me. Clinton Township never communicates, so I'm just kind of doing an estimate based on, um. The reason that the half year is already forty-four is because they didn't make a second payment last fiscal year in time, what he gives was a lot. So that's why that was higher. And then the township, I don't believe has met yet, uh. I will communicate with them and get an estimate, if they don't, if they haven't met, we need to put a figure in there, I'll probably put, you know, fifty-five thousand. Um, Lynn County ARCA money, uh, obviously it's not gonna be the ninety twenty-three, because, um. We, uh, did not get approved for the second one. Um. I'll have some conversations with Shane to see what he thinks, maybe the estimate of that he has spent. By, um, the end of June, I can tell you the first bill that I wrote for the, um, well, I submitted for reimbursement, they just reimbursed it all. A hundred percent, so I'm thinking they're paying the first four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars up. And then we'll use ours again. Um, Walford, again, they've already told us the library amount, Lynn County, that's from the library budget, uh, request, and township for the library. And then, uh, city of Palo, based on the actual, uh, half year that looks in line. The, uh, last year's budget, this year's budget was a little different because of the. Uh, library charges that came from their budget request. And then a couple of small miscellaneous line and self-tax collective that came from children, but that's, we just take it in and we just. Submit it to the state, that's what we're submitting now. Payers free, Pennsylvania, the fire department, um. Standard amounts for their, um. Savings account, you can see that, you know, that top one, they've already gotten way more, but we never know. When those big estate funds will come in, you know, so we don't typically plan for that. Um, and it just goes in their savings anyway, and then they have a line in their budget to spend their savings for me if they come up with something for it, and again, if they. Don't have enough in the savings line, we'll amend it before state on the savings account, it doesn't affect your general checking accounts. Um, library, um, donations, again, this is just kind of an estimate, that's from the library board request. And then the parks, um, these items are from Joe's requests. Um. You know, the park grants, whenever you get that seventy-five thousand, that will obviously up that line, but I'm tired of putting it on the budget, not getting it. Um. The Veterans Memorial, um. Will be done this spring, what they were done that, so I, I just put something in there in case that, um, we get a small amount or maybe, uh. See, oh, yeah, I did make another line for painters, river down, uh, Hartland Hart Street participation, you can see this year's. Large, because they went ahead and they paid for all the lots they have planted, for the connection fees and the street participation, but. And they did a, uh, a year ago, a large chunk all at once too, but we don't plan on that. Typically, if they haven't paid for all the lot, they pay it as they sell the lot, so a calculated amount to. Uh, any questions on page three? Page four, nobody knows what insurance, okay. Welcome packet, um, most of that comes in before the end of December, we'll, we'll. Get a few more jumpers, but. I took it down to three rather than thirty-five, that's a little high, but it goes close, um, miscellaneous. Uh, I think the miscellaneous are big that you see there, thirteen eight, that was from insurance lanes. Uh, that weren't separated out to a different line. Newsletter month, uh, ads, those come in fairly, uh, regular, so I think that's all, it's pretty, pretty accurate. And, uh, the cable franchise revenue, you know, that's not guaranteed space and sales, but it has been broken system. So that's the end of the total general revenue. Page five and special revenues, road use packs, um, the league has spent a hundred and thirty thousand per person, which would take us to three, six, and seven, six. I raised it a bit based on this year's actual, um. I think we probably should call somewhere, maybe seventy-five thousand and four hundred thousand. And then the local option sales tax, they don't give us the estimate any longer, they give us the amount we actually receive based on their calculation. But I think the four fifty is, is pretty consistent and accurate, you can see the last pool, uh, actually is four eight eight. Um, tip, um, that, that's at one six, we've already certified that, you can change that at this point, we didn't do that for small. That's where it's set, and then tip interest. And then line six, I'll fill in a lot more that's transferred, which kind of makes a difference, what kind of projects, if you do debt, you know. Uh, well, the, the total transfers, so I put transfers in and the transfers out, always balanced, that is moving money from one fund to a first fund, okay? Any questions? And line, error, page six is where I put an anticipated G O bond. Okay, so it's in expenses, page seven, uh, public safety. Lawn enforcement, uh, we just have the Lynn County Sheriff's contract at this time. Fire department, you can see how we came up with the calculation.
Real quick, um, speaking of that, sorry, I'm sidetracked, but has there been any? Interest by a private company?
Every private company that I come up with to go contact with me. That's not to say there's not some offer that I don't know about or.
I know it's really dangerous, right?
They're more like site, or presence patrol.
Um. Um, it shows, uh, the breakdown, how we came up with it. Um, so in this total, I've got Fairfax Township estimated at fifty-nine eighty-two. Oh, I did look up their taxable valuation, and I took the times the point six oh seven five, I don't know if they love me for that for sure, so. I think that would be the max, because that might come down a little bit of time, and if you remember, Walford's given us a dollar, we agreed to five years to go more towards that. And so what I've done is just took the total, which you can see towards the top of page eight. And took out the debt and then took out, um. The savings line and some of the other kind of set lines that we can tell, and then through anything else, equipment. Which their equipment line is, is usually a bigger amount to start out with, and I would think if they have big equipment needs, and they will be. Amending their savings line amount to move money to savings. EMA is. Who wants to buy something, we was for. Uh, very small, building department, um. Estimates are just about ten thousand dollars higher, I added the Bellin, um, Conservation Eastman, that's the ten thousand extra. Some of the other lines have just kind of shifted. Some of the other lines have just kind of shifted, um. Questions? Animal control, thousand, that's pretty much our set number. And my next time, based on the numbers, we decide to go with, I will fill in these current balances and revenue projections and stuff, maybe similar to. And then this show, page nine shows the transfer out of lots for thirty thousand to go towards the fire department debt payment. Which we've done that for years now. Any question about public safety? And so that four eighty-six, oh thirty-four, if you don't change anything, that's the number you're going to be on the budget. That's the number state let us go over. Okay, without a budget in that. Public works. So, um. You can see like the IDOT participation contract, you know, when we will hopefully by the end of June. We do have that bond money on hand. Church Street Design, uh, we have bonded for that. Will all be done by June thirtieth, I don't know, Shane and I will be having emails back and forth. Church Street, that would be the rest of the entire project, we decided to do it at some point, that would be bonded for. West Cemetery Bridge Project, that's on your CIP, Vanderbilt Street, I think it was, um, process, I'm on that. Curry Avenue is done. Traverro Street Lighting, that's that one thirty to go the shorter distance. Love of Beer Overlay, we just got a bill today for nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand or something like that. So hopefully that will be billed out by June thirtieth. Um, heart one, heart one heights participation, that's the other things like the, uh, planting and stuff. You can't think of what, what management you can ask. Um, and equipment lease, a fourth of it gets paid there. Local option sales tax, uh, this shows the current year and previous year projects that we have in local option sales tax. I, I have not, you know, gone, gotten in suggested how to spend your estimated four hundred and fifty thousand. Although consistently, we have been putting money for the contractor, uh, road contractor work in there and excavator lease, so those are the only two amounts I, that I do.
First of all, I want to carry on from that. We wouldn't mind if that all looped through silver that shot storage concrete. So you can tell, tell a little bit more of what we're doing for last year. And then do we bring up the dump truck?
Yep, this is where you bring up.
Yeah, so. How we put that, is that, we're still, the guys are starting to work on trying to figure out how to ensure that. Um, it's going to be a year to two years out before you get it, so it would be up to that three hundred thousand dollars. So maybe part of your loss, maybe part of your local budgeting. I don't know.
Sixty compared to new revenue of four hundred thousand, but the fund has a balance. Which is we're not, I'm quite used to.
Yeah.
What what's really helped that balance is doing some of the contract.
That's huge and just for example, that the fifty five thousand we've been averaging for Silco eighty thousand, seventy to eighty thousand. So. That's a big number.
Yeah, it makes it makes a huge difference. In the this proposed budget, we have forty eight five for total contract. More than. So, you know. I'm comfortable with, you know, that the revenues, projected revenues a little bit less. Than the projected expenses. They're both an estimate. Uh, but if anyone isn't.
If you're very moving to do a click.
We used to really have to go back. We've got a bunch of stuff unrealistically and wrote. Page fourteen starts the library and we come right from the library, uh, submitted budget. And it's just like in the fire department, I've given you the, um. How we came up with the amounts. And, um, showed you the valuation is perfectly taxable and.
What's other benefits?
What?
Is that, is that just? What it, what is that?
It's Kathy here.
Oh Kathy, sorry. It's here. What what's up? Sorry, stupid question. What's other benefits?
I mean, that's just things like. If we're on account of sales or this.
Sorry.
Not really hard. Any plus, other questions about libraries? Page fifteen is part. Again, uh, Joe and I worked together about payroll. And and for us of those, the, I know, came from Joe's, but.
That's, that's pretty normal. In the playground, they had the true.
Now you got a nice.
Did you get a nice dump trail for all that noise?
Sorry, trail.
Sorry, trail.
We do have a line in here at Union Gardens, um, the payroll estimate, of course, includes the, um. Part-time parks, but also would be additional hours for the concession stand joke or I can advise it up long. And then also for, uh. An estimate for a, an assist. Right?
Right.
I think two kids really needs that.
I can give you all day long the reason why those firefighters was. What about your six year old? At six and seven, you're all good.
Okay, so in these, uh, so the general fund projects. Mower, you'll see now nothing to currently remember. You discussed moving that mower. To the snow blower and tiller line, so I've done that. And, um. Then the lighting project, you know, maybe it'll be all done by June, you know, maybe we need nothing there for the new, I I don't know. The Heartland Heights Park, I know, won't be completely done by June, so try to get an estimate closer to what we have to know that the drop. Um, and again, the. NPO trail, whether you're gonna do that. Wh- when that starts or where it shows up. Alright, so those three big amounts in the projects are. Two of them are definitely committed, but I don't know how much we actually need.
And Cynthia?
Yeah.
Back on page sixteen.
Yeah, that's the page I'm on.
We still have the, uh, concession percentage at nine thousand.
We're gonna have a concession stand.
Yeah, FYSA concession.
Oh, yeah.
That should go to zero.
Zero, okay. That's good. Question about culture and recreation. Oh, there's another one. There's another page. So this is where, um, shows the, a lot of current lost project, uh, for cars. And then, I mean, we usually transfer our money to leave the class. Now, questions about total culture and recreation?
Those audings, they come in spring?
Yeah, they're here.
They're here.
Yeah, we finally got the right, um, hopefully we have the right parts to put them up. The guys already have the post. Um, and then soon as the weather turns well, we'll get the onyx. With the time, they'll get the onyx. They'll get the onyx out, so. We got all the parts last fall and then we went to try to put it together, but the coverage didn't work, so they sent us around beams. So they came in, replaced that. And they say everything's close to bit. We're still skeptical for maintenance studies, so they guarantee it. They say stretch the turf. So we're gonna ask them for one P on that and they said they'll cover it, so we will see. Well, I'm not sure how that's gonna go.
I have all kinds of confidence in them.
Yeah, maybe a broken tart. But we'll see. The company is real good though. They came with, yeah, the owner himself came in and talked to us and. We'll see. He he wasn't even sure. What else?
Hey Shane, could we add, or may it may be further down, but maybe in the five year. CIP, could we add the park restrooms and any pavilions? Just get it on there as told, or reminded about, I remember.
So you say that we covered the Hayes Park or all the parts?
A park could then have a restroom where it's available, and we just hope that we can. Be reminded that it's not there, or that we'd be, it's not in the front. But if it's not even listed.
Can play more trees.
Trees and we can find a NPD on them.
Comments or questions about culture and recreation? You wanna talk about any park projects or not, since we have time to review the CFP ones?
Yeah, I'd say we're at a loss again.
Um, page eighteen is a pretty. Small, um. Program total for us, um. Community and economic development, Christmas decorations.
Christmas decorations and I got a number, so I don't know how good the number is. Oh, just try six hundred dollars to redo the electrical poles. So he's trying to work with the Y and the R E C. I've seen for permitting. That's not going very well, um, on that, but if we. They pretty much all need redone. So with that number, I wouldn't be opposed to jump it up to about ten.
Well, we have six in the current budget because that's spent.
Yeah, between the two.
Well, is that six hundred? That's just two.
One pole.
Oh, okay. And how many poles are?
I think over twenty, some.
And that's not adding any new poles in the new development.
And even on that, R E C, he's getting the feedback that R E C is not gonna allow. So I think that's all R E C are really.
But I mean, they don't, we can get Christmas banners.
Yeah, and I don't know, we need to talk to them about that. You hate to call their poles, just their poles, right? It's their poles. Yeah, they're just wearing different poles. Lose light bulbs and it's like a view. The poles that we have currently with the Christmas lights, I don't know how many are legal tabs. Do you have anything weird on it? So a builder's looking at.
But if we have six and six, we have twelve poles there. How good are those money?
It will help. It may not cover, but yeah.
Um, development planning, engineering, that's just, sorry, you know, legal for, um. Development type issues, twenty five thousand. Hopefully we need to get close to that, but you know. We did spend some for P and B training. We don't usually, I don't would not feel repeating that very next year. We did, uh. Taylor came and took training too and gave her. Um, economic development, that's for membership. And then annexation, I think Shane didn't say like the current budget is projected, it's like seventy five hundred.
Something like that.
And then, um. Heartland Heights participation. I I don't have that other twenty two thousand, but this is where the CDs. We have heart participation all over the place and never enough. And then other admin, uh, that will go to zero, I. I feel that we should charge for the TIC report out of there, but it's, the state makes it really difficult with reforms to do it, so it's not worth it. I'm just gonna take it to zero and put it in the general government. Um, page twenty, general government. This is some mayor council wages. This is not reflecting any kind of increase. So if you want to work that in, you know. Um, if you would, would, you'd have to pass it no later than September, October. I think no later than October, and it wouldn't take effect until after the election. Oh, that two, the twenty thousand in training is incorrect. That's a fat figure. It should be two thousand. Yeah, I know. Um, and then for, um, you've shown me the percentages of, uh, states and Tina and I's salaries that come out of here. We are having an election in November, and that's an estimate based on input from Lake County. And legal, again, they always hold the fifty thousand's way too much. Looking at six month actual, it looks like it is. But I tend to be a pessimist there. We have something happening. It doesn't take long to spend. Okay, city hall. Hopefully we wouldn't have to replace the geosystems. Now, this is as of December, and we have paid the geosystems in, um. January, and always as part of this budget project, I look and see where we need to do amendments, and we will have to do an amendment in. General government because of that geosystem sitting on, so we'll be getting more information, et cetera, for reading about. Um, so. Cleaning and. Building supplies, the security system, utilities. Telephone. Insurance. It's always really hard because we haven't paid an insurance bill since April of twenty two. So we gotta do our budget before we know the April twenty three amount, and then we're guessing for April twenty four. So that's not very. Um, generator, other equipment, we fund that line with our, um, rental income. Miss land. And then, um, other government, um, expenses, um, in the guise, um, whoever has weekend duty checks through. Uh, this is where those wages get charged out. Straightest way, you know. Um, and then, uh. Audit. Engineering, I have two. And the big ones, I guess, the news letters, they know that it's covered with, we're showing fifteen thousand estimate. Memberships, I thought to the Ivy League. Um, publishing, the electronics, I mean, we used to pay for that a lot for recent mention, okay. Pay that a little bit. Um, IT work. And the website, that's just an agent fee, except we can just pay once a year, but made it as a minute in December. Page twenty two, refunds, security system. Uh, equipment, the actual last full year actual was high because that's where we purchased the printers. Um, office supplies. Postage, locker packets, again, that's offset with revenue. Code and miscellaneous. So the substantial general is a little bit higher, but, um, this year current is going to have a budget measure, so it will go much higher. And then the transfer out of lost, oh, there we spent some more lost. So, um, you know, if we remember, we did not want to bond for the, um. City Hall payment, because we've always paid the city hall lease from lots, so we were hoping to, you know. Continue to do that, and we knew that it would bump a little bit higher, but eventually it's paid off and it's done, right? So we'll just continue. So there's a hundred and ten thousand from that three fifty two. So now we're down to forty. I know, I'm really good taking that number down, aren't I?
You can go on bridge.
Okay, then, um. Starting page twenty three is water, and so the water and sewer garbage. I show the revenues right on that same page, um. So the water revenue, I'm showing you what the, um, last under change, it was June of twenty one, we changed the debt service fee. It's a little too much, but the current amounts are. Um, sample bill amounts for just the water portion later for you. And then. I believe this, again, the connection fees are really large because, um, Trabero paid their second half. And. Yeah, we would never. Halfway or anticipate that very far ahead, so you see they paid fifty one. And then the water excise tax is so large because they had to pay sales tax on their connection case, so that's why it's elevated. Leaders deposits are pretty always consistent, then the water debt, the that. Thirteen fifty that we collect goes into this water debt fund. And, uh. Pretty accurate. Most were received. They don't have any transfers put in there, but there would be some, a small amount of transfer from water to, uh, G O for debt. Um, and then, uh. If the water revenue debt fund doesn't have enough to make the water payments, then we usually move some from regular water. To cover, because if you remember, the recommendation for the debt service being seventeen, if you wanted just that fee to pay. The the water debt requirement. There's nothing wrong with paying it out of some of the regular rate money, but, um. So that we would transfer to them. Then water, um, expenditures. These, um, almost are all coming from Kevin, but a little input for insurance. The water tower being, you know. Decided not to be funded because we knew it was gonna be a large project. Now, if it's funded here or as a capital. So we'll need to put it one of the ways, okay, there. Put it in the capital project, so we'll. Um, any questions? There, I don't begin with one toward the schedule release comes out of water. Um, the budget amendment that I've got drafted. Will change this current budget to include the truck. A hundred thousand in water and a hundred thousand in sewer. And I've got that question down there, you know, put it in the budget amendment, because we ended up having to pay for it in June suddenly, and we have amended that. Um, there's just some water studying money left. Water storage project and extensions are done. Questions about water? Page twenty five, tackle. Yeah, so, uh, the well and the tower painting will have in there. Uh, but we are not getting Arca money for the tower. That's, remember, we had applied for Lake County's. Some more money to pay this term, so it's gonna be bonding that would play to that, and I think the estimate is by sixty now. So I'm kind of, so look and see how much should be kept in this year and how much you can sort of store. With the well and the power project. And then, um, there are, you'll. Uh, loan payments for water, um, that are coming out of the water debt service. Again, there's a little bit comes out of this G O, but this is all. Questions? So you've got total expenses. Of eight twenty nine and total projected revenue of seven seventy. But that is with that hundred thousand over a truck.
Yeah, so we we didn't work that in.
Yes, we did.
You know, you wouldn't expect to cover something like that, you know, just one year, but, you know, that's until we, we decide we had enough.
Maybe order to try.
Different truck, this was a hot service.
No, yeah, but we have another one for, we ordered one twenty one for this guy.
Now, this is the one that's raised to the old sun.
Okay, page twenty six, sewer revenue. Awesome, we're generally estimates. Again, connection fees are skewed, right? Um, on current rate, last time it was changed in twenty twenty. And then it gives you some same bills. And then, um. Again, we need twenty one dollars for much services within the time. And then it's insurance, you know, mostly based on Kevin's input. That ten thousand for sewer line cleaning, television, I work towards. A rolling, um, for the leasing. So that hundred at the shop at ten thousand, when? Would that all have lost, or is that supposed to be split by the split wing now? This is now water and sewer. Contributed to.
Awesome.
And then ten thousand and not twenty back then. Okay, uh, here would be the Heartland Heights sewer participation again, tiny. If we just made the shift into other participations who might have. And there's the service tracks.
The only thing I see, you didn't have anything for parts. First texture. This year you got five thousand for each.
I guess.
I've not spent any, anytime.
I can carry it over. Yeah, we'll, we'll price with this year, I mean, let's cover it for next year.
Uh, and then twenty eight is the sewer debt service. And I'll do the verification check, the balance and some stuff, make sure that we have enough, but typically the sewer debt service does. And again, that load is paid off. Page twenty nine is garbage. This is where we have to do something with rates. You know, uh, Republic's estimate is, um, increase of three dollars and forty seven cents.
They got back to.
Uh, he did, like, Friday, I think, sent me a proposal. I just sent down that to him. I mean, he didn't change any pricing measure than what he was. Currently, we're at seventeen twenty five. And paying them somewhere fifteen ninety three. So I have this revenue estimated that you would raise the rate to twenty one. Which you can. Do it differently if you need much.
Is there more for Charles?
Fifty ninety three plus three forty seven. So their amount each month is going to nineteen forty. And we go to twenty one. Dollar six. That's a dollar sixty to pass, and right now we're getting. Right now, I'm getting a dollar thirty two, so it's actually giving us a little bit extra. Um, I can tell you that pretty consistently that garbage. Fund at the end of year, we charge Spacy's salary to it, goes a little bit negative, I think. So I would recommend you go to twenty one, which is, that's giving them extra twenty seven cents.
So four dollars in. Three dollars.
What?
Changes.
The three forty seven.
No, we're total here. Three dollars in change.
So you can see the general fund balance at the end of last fiscal year was over nine hundred ninety. And this year's projected expenses are more than one hundred. Well, that obviously should not be ten thousand. So I'm saying the three thirty. Which is still a little bit more.
The collection is based on two thousand dollars.
Yes. She taught that. Army fund, um. I don't. Have any idea, I assume it's because of the crop. Our income was so much higher this year, I don't know. What we planned this year, what we're planning the next year, we should go back down to the seven thousand estimate.
In corn game last year, yeah. We should, that's probably she.
Well, we're taking a chunk.
So that's true. So you think seven is, I just had no way to ask. The sixty two fifty eight, would that have been beans then?
No, I think it's corny, they had a lot of problems here. Yeah, so they won't do it. I started saying. Usually you're supposed to rotate.
So do you want to be there for that? And again. Estimated by. Hey, let me do some, did we do some title, we did some sort of unexpected work that I know that. In the farm.
Yeah, really had us.
Yeah, but so that's why I took it down to five, but. We are really kind of, again, the next page is a subtotal page and then the next pages are that service. Um filled in, we don't have to close, I mean, I drew them. At the top of page thirty two in the corner there, it shows you what transfers would need to happen to pay to make all of this. And you can see that one five ninety five would be two some kind of tip that I was certified with. And um that each um on page thirty three. The Heartland High Extension, um. Mark to use connection fees or debt service funds for that not tip so that L M I doesn't get in. Page thirty four shows like thirty. And again, um in the center of the general fund, the Heartland Heights Park, used general fund money to that so L M I doesn't get in. That's twenty three seventeen. And for the other contrifications, it's small, thirty eight seven. And this Heartland Heights Sewer participation. Page thirty five shows that hundred ten thousand from lost from City Hall. Questions?
Um I guess my own question is, and I have. Too much time now voting into it, there's no real legitimate way of. Identifying something that L M I to not create L M I, but define previously.
Well, you um we just had very minimal discussions of buying and terms about this. I know that you could set up a program with such a criteria and individual homeowners kind of buy and do projects in the house. Kevin and I had discussed, you know, that we could identify less service lines and. Help contribute to that, but again, the owner of the property has to qualify through the annual income. So it could be a retired lady that owns a house free and clear and has some CDs, so that she only gets a little bit of social security, she could qualify. It's not, you know, look at your total net worth, okay, for the process. Um then we also asked the bonding attorney, if we got a whole block to qualify, could we do. You know, storm sewer and pavement, pavement, curb and gutter, you know, all that kind of improvement, he says absolutely, but. Sometimes hard to make a whole block qualify, but you can, you know, sidewalk and all sorts of improvements there. And then maybe using a L M I free back then.
I just didn't know if it was something worth looking into a little bit more considering you've been talking about G O and. And things like that to see if it's something that uh that my understanding is correct, create a little more tip. Um without having to create any sort of L M I industry that fills up, but help the people like. That are more interested in something with those type of projects, if that makes sense.
What do you mean by free?
Well, I mean, we only can use so much tip and then we have to have certain amounts to say L M I, right?
Well, if you use any tip money towards those debts that I, that were for high income residential. Then for every dollar tip that you use to pay that bond, that part of bond back, you have to set up about thirty six, thirty seven. To go for L M I, so when you go to. Um certify for tip, you have to certify that. So you would be using more of your taxable valuation to generate that L M I money in addition to the rate of which. But it makes some fun of table.
Good, that's what I was getting at, for some of these projects that maybe we are interested in doing, we not necessarily want to do. As G O. Do those projects, but then when we're required to set aside that third for L M I, if you have something able to. Do specifically like little pair of backs, you know, roads, things like that, but. So to the point is how much more do we want to get to see what homes qualify or can they stretch of homes qualify allowed.
You know, uh it requires company to go knocking their door, you know, so you know, fell out.
What do we give us that? General what it needs to, that threshold is for L M I. Spare for him to be low.
I read, and I can't tell you what it is, but I can, I can look that up, I I know I can that.
If you can give us this number, maybe like. Just figure out where we have such.
Um and sometimes um cities hire like the cog to do the income gathering and vote. Sometimes the residents feel better that it's not somebody in staff, but like, you know, going on the third party. And then a lot of times they'll have, uh let's say you set up the criteria to do an individual program or something to replace their load or. Inside their house or whatever. Um they can actually apply through the cog. You know, they look at it and they make the determination that they qualify, so of course you, you know, pay the cost to do that, but sometimes it works.
More drills, of course, it's like a lot of times we've had equipment for our state, it's our waters, you're working a lot of. Lost, but really everything I really saw was a truck.
Well, because that's kind of like the snowblower, the tip of a windshield and all that. The area is where it should be in the budget compared to lots of loss. Pretty much all, like you said, all the equipment that we have, facilities that we have, remains, everything that we have, it goes a lot to a lot of. You know, that's why I was kind of curious when you jump with the truck, like who else, yeah, the Germans, and their wish that's going on from out of lot.
Well, the water wastewater is always the last five years being updated and everything. There's very low needs that, you know, we're saving very good.
When uh Lynn and I first started, you know, we bought the two big dump trucks out of there first. And then when Kevin heard come on board, a lot of lost paid for utility upgrades. We're desperate, which we needed, but it's kind of got to.
So where is your running tally at the loss?
Two hundred and forty two thousand.
Leftover with that hundred thousand one hundred.
No, a hundred thousand for the service truck.
Oh, it's coming out of your hips already.
Mine is coming out of my two budgets.
Yeah, you're asking it for lost. The dump truck.
The service truck is someone that's already ordered and that's coming out of the waters.
But did you figure the dump truck, the two ninety two?
No, we got two forty two three.
I'll take us to one forty two three, if we take the dump truck out of.
We're guessing the dump truck's going to be close to three hundred total.
Because we are already below what you're projecting.
So we don't have actual numbers for that, they gotta get working on that, figure out how it's like that, I'll maybe do the number.
So so far what I've got coming out of lost. With the estimated beginning bounce, which may be a little low and the new revenue is the thirty thousand required for. Twenty six thousand extra for the Vanderbilt Street. The ten thousand for the shop, I gotta label that.
And the thirty thousand fire for that for the.
And then keeping a hundred thousand balance. And then uh the seventy one thousand seven hundred, that's for. Road contractors fifty five in the lease for the excavator sixteen seven. And then a hundred and ten people sitting all paid, to at least two forty two.
They give you a comparison from, if I remember correctly, the same one I sold that we bought in two thousand thirteen, I think was a hundred and seventy eighty thousand. Way back then, so.
And the whole thing went.
And we have Sanderson to give us a guess about who that's going, where we came up with that three hundred, but now we're actually trying to put some numbers together to see. How close it is.
So it would be more feasible to possibly wait till next year's budget and do another hundred out of.
That's. Because it's going to take a while to do this, so if you purchase part of it, you know, the other half is going to be later when it's done anyway.
So you're just going to do like a down payment out of loss this fiscal year and then. Next year you'll do a hundred out of sewer and a hundred out of water plus whatever the remaining balance might be. Something, that is a possibility.
Yes, and you'll have to buy the chassis. Yeah, that's going to take over.
I guess you probably would use dump truck for prowler or something, do the water base pair or something.
So I'm guessing we have to get the chassis initially, because that's going to take a long list to get here and on the bed. The one we talked to today said they're expecting, who we talked to today, actually one expected third or quarter next year, the one that might show up. So it's just a chassis, it's just crazy. So so you're, if you've got a plan on not doing, you need to get going on now, so you can get the money for it. And get it when you want it, if you wait in two years without doing anything, then you're. If that kind of easy going the way it is, you're going to be waiting on another.
So what does that leave us?
Hundred forty two.
That you used to talk about leaving a hundred out for her, so is there really two forty? Or hundreds are.
Yeah.
There'd be two forty, a hundred.
A hundred forty more, wait, wait, a hundred forty two to spend.
Well, there is a possibility to take fifty out of water sewer and then try and help. Pay for that for next year, but then the following year, take another fifty hours. To pay for the whole, you know, help pay for the whole truck, so just stagger it over a couple of years. And I would get my mouth made by the chassis by the time it comes in.
And the other thing to think about is if you order it now, within two years' time, maybe one of these dump trucks is shot, you know.
I might have ordered now, we just turned our strength up a lot.
So when you check into the details for the next few days, you'll find out if you order it now, when the chassis payment would be due. Your install won't be told by your.
Well, he's he's ignored, but he says, I want to talk to details, please, I'll play the word. As far as, so we have that name, so whether it be before June or not, I can find it out.
Yeah, that's what I need to know, if it's before June or after.
Truck might change a lot of meters. At the pirate church, yeah, we need that.
So if you do a hundred thousand, we this will twenty four. Or if you do it just the year in anticipation of the revenue, um then you're down to one forty two. With a balance of a hundred.
That's where some of the things been working out as we've been replacing. Just how the flow of like the badges with the other trucks you can purchase, pay for that lending out, that do it, so. We've kind of fit them together. Well, let's see.
We'll take that over.
Parts, travel lines at home part.
Now we're going to take money out to buy the guns for out of parts, that's real alternative.
I'm sorry, did you say?
Any other questions or I'll look into the L M I, the thresholds qualify. Pencil in. The one ninety two sixty is the G O box and then let's see. That changes in February, so just kind of budget. This is assuming the state doesn't mess up our evaluation, so we have to start all over again. Um in February, you'll have max levy hearing and then you'll adopt the max levy. And then you will um set the regular budget hearing from March fourteenth and then we'll discuss the budget. Wrap up, actually, we have some unbalanced. Projections and you'll come up with your ideas for the C I P and for that hundred and forty two and lost. And then when we leave February, I mean, I have to have enough loophole to publish the budget here. So we're, even if you don't adopt the budget till March, you really can't change much, you do a little bit of things, but. At that point, you're locked in and again, you can amend from July.
The one point four billion for D O T funds, what's the stipulation of that as far as creating using that?
Good bridge?
Yeah.
The Shane.
Three years.
We have an offer competitive bids, three year that we're signing the agreement.
We signed that, that one's good.
I'm not signing it by March.
Okay, so we have actually choice.
Quick question.
Three years, put it up with it.
On the over cap relation on property values. Have you even had a conference, you can guess how much that would be this?
I have not, I should be able to kind of come up with.
Because and that's, the reason I ask is we're talking about the extra hundred forty in loss, is that something we can also. Using or we need to look here with revising our. I'll close down.
Yeah, I I can probably come up with a close guess because I I know one of those things that was sent today has exact changes. Percentage that is being rebounded tonight and then. In the tactical evaluation, I've got to report the shows by class.
So you want to be thirty?
If anyone has anything else, I guess mayor's comments, we're already in the air, so no mayor comment.
I don't have anything, but I have already.
Uh it's not out here, but uh there's nobody here from the public here, so. All right, no one has anything else, I'll take the motion to adjourn.